Present a broader picture of our approach in the years to come. So, looking forward to that conversation with y'all.
I move to adopt E5.
A second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have our city managers' reports. And we're going to continue down the path of doing annual reports. We only have one for this evening. And that is for Parks and Rec. And so Jason will take it from here. And I do have a second update, by the way. So after Jason is done, I'll talk about a different topic. But anyway, take it away, Jason.
All right, thank you, sir. Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor Protem. So, wanted to just take a brief moment and talk about Parks and Recreation, specifically 2020 for the annual report. It'll be somewhat similar to, I'm sure, what some of y'all have seen previously, really touching on the COVID aspect. But in addition to that, we will be touching on a few other things. Parks and Recreation Commission, some of the Parks and Recreation statistics that we have, goals and accomplishments, and really what's going to be in our future moving forward. So, our Parks and Recreation response to COVID. It really, really hit the Parks and Recreation Department pretty hard, not only here, but you know, across the state, across the country. Because Parks and Recreation Departments, I mean, that's what we do. We bring people together, right? We like to have fun. We like to have people, you know, interacting with each other. And then all of a sudden, we can't do that anymore. So, you know, I wanted to show you a few different pictures of what, you know, we would typically think of like a normal year, right? We're going to be planning for our events. We're going to have your movies in the park. We're going to have our petting zoo. And again, we just couldn't make that happen this year. So, what we did was, we started implementing some COVID restrictions. And one of the biggest things that NRPA helped us out with, which is National Recreation and Parks Association, is coming up with some very general signs for the entire Parks and Recreation Departments to be able to utilize. So I wanted to bring this to y'all's attention. I'm not sure if you've seen this before in our parks, but I can tell you that probably 99.9% of Park and Recreation professionals are worn out from seeing this. We've seen this since about February or March when everything started. So, this is something that NRPA pushed out for us. Again, just to really kind of help local departments in saying, hey, look, you know, here's, here, we can stay very general, or you can be, you know, very specific. So this has been really ingrained and embedded within our department, again, as well as others around the state and the country. So what did we actually do to try to, you know, continue on with our programs and our events? Well, in addition to the NRPA beautiful blue sign that I just showed you, spreading that throughout the community. We also placed social distancing signs throughout the park system. A little bit more detailed than what the picture I just showed you. We also disinfected playground structures and parks equipment. We were also able to continue on with some of our programs and just through COVID, you know, plans and through COVID implementation for our programs. But as you can see in that middle picture, that's a kayak clinic. And so we're still able to host that clinic just at a reduced capacity with our participants. And of course, having some of those restrictions in place as well. We also closed our splash pads temporarily. Right there at the beginning of June and July, I think it was, we had a lot of, a big surge and a big uptick. And so we ended up closing those splash pads. On the flip side, as things started to become a little bit looser, if you will, with some of the restrictions, we opened those splash pads back up. So that way, folks could enjoy them the latter part of summer up until October. We did have some outside of the box programming and event planning. Two of those are the pictures on your left-hand side. We had the Halloween in the park, and we also had the Christmas drive-through parade. And so those were something different, something unique. Again, you know, it's first time for everything. Not a whole lot of folks have done it. There was a lot of, you know, with NRPA, there's their threads and forums. And people are like, hey, what are, what are we doing? How do we do this? And so it was, it was very challenging, but nonetheless, we were able to pull it off. We did, again, have some reduced capacity at some of our programs and venues. But one of the things that I wanted to highlight was that through everything that we went through, we also were able to put on, or continue to put on, sports programs and sports leagues. And so with that picture on the right-hand side that shows that with that partnership that we have with Academy, we were still able to continue to put on some of those programs, like volleyball and softball and flag football. So while our programs and our events may have taken a little bit of a hit, and we had to think outside the box, we were still able to continue to move forward with our sports, sports programs and try to, try to bring, you know, folks back to the outside. For our sports tournaments, this is, this is kind of how it's, how it's laid out over the last two, two or three years. So in 2018, it's the, the green graph, or the green bar. The orange bar is 2019, and the blue bar is 2020. So as you can tell, you know, in 2019, everything, you know, kind of took a hit. Or 2020, everything kind of took a hit a little bit. We went from 12 and 10 on the adult softball complex tournaments. We actually increased that just, just by, by three and by two, the two years prior. Our youth sports complex stayed the same. Our Riverside Stadium tournaments pretty much stayed the same. Our total tournaments, though, increased, which was, which is kind of interesting. But again, because of our sports aspect of it, we were able to really continue to push on those tournaments and those leagues. And so I think that's been, that's been great. One thing that I'd like to point out is that our one-day tournaments are usually the six to 15 teams. Our two-day tournaments are usually 15 to 35 teams. And typically, what we average any time that we see a tournament, a sports tournament like this, is about 15 teams on average. So just to kind of give you an idea. And then, of course, we had the golf course. You know, every, everybody, as I mentioned earlier, the, the sports was still able to move forward. And golf, you know, took a small hit with that as well. So in April, we, we completely shut down the course, really trying to get a grasp on what was going on. How can we implement some of these changes and still continue to provide, you know, quality of life amenities for, for the community? And so what we were able to do was increase our sanitization of the golf carts. We're also able to use carts individually for each round of golf. And then, you know, everybody was, well, what about the pins? How am I going to put the flag? And those kinds of things, right? So there is, I can tell you, a multitude of different ideas that came out. And ultimately, what we ended up doing was putting a piece of foam in the cup. And so what ends up happening is the ball doesn't necessarily go all the way down into the cup. And so you don't have to pull the pin. So it's just a reduction in the amount of touches or high-touch points that we have. And then we also removed coolers in some of those items that were extremely high-touch points off of the course. Our golf course statistics have been doing pretty well, honestly. Even throughout, as I mentioned, throughout the pandemic, I mean, golf has seen a really big uptick, not only here locally, but across, across the country. Again, the, the bar graphs are still the same, 2018, 19, and 2020. You can see that the rounds played have continued to increase. The annual pass rounds have continued to increase. Our junior and senior rounds have pretty much stayed the same since 2019, 2020, just a slight decrease. Our tournament rounds have, have continued to increase as well. And overall, we're doing very well. We're, we're pushing about 28,000 rounds for the year of 2020, which again, as you can see in that last graph, has been a steady increase. Gilbert may have some different opinion, but if, from the numbers that I've seen, it's about 180,000 roughly increase each year since 2018 on the revenue side of the golf course. So again, just a steady uptick in the rounds as well as the revenues. And then the community center. Community Center, they played a vital role in what we're doing with, with community center, with COVID, more specifically this year. But what we had to do with last year is reduce our events. And not only reduce our events, but also reduce the capacity that we were able to hold, host, host those events. I know when I first got here, there was a lot of, you know, 25%, 50%, what does that look like? And then the governor came out with his orders. And so what we were able to do to continue operating and continue providing an area for people to, to have an event, we increased our cleaning and our sanitizing practices. I mean, that's just a, it's just a repeated thing throughout. We're also removed water fountain access, though. Again, it goes back to the high-touch points, like I mentioned earlier, at the golf course. We also reduced our serving lines. We had requirements. Those individuals either had to have somebody there, or it was just reduced all around, or they couldn't have it. And we also required masks for events. And, and then we had event layouts that were a little bit more stringent. So we, you know, continued to space out the tables, continued to reduce the amount of chairs that were in each table, et cetera. And then one of the silver linings that came out of this is that while we had reduced events and we had reduced capacity, it allowed our staff to look at some of the other maintenance items that are needing, that were needing to be done at the community center. And so for a time there, when we didn't have any events, they were able to, you know, add some extra paint here and there, clean here and there, a little bit more so than what they normally would have. And so I think a silver lining in it is that we were able to, you know, increase our maintenance, if you will, in some of those small projects that we've been wanting to do. I did want to mention that we have some pictures here of the, of the COVID vaccination layout. As Mr. Garza mentioned earlier, there's been a lot of positive comments about how quickly and how efficient that is. And just to show you a quick layout of what that looks like. And then, of course, we have the mayor's State of the Speech, or State of the City Address from last year. And so I wanted to make sure that we included that as well. Community Center statistics. What does this look like? So what we do is we have city rented, we keep track of the city rented rentals, if you will, and then the outside organization rentals. This one's a little different. This actually goes from 2019 to year-to-date because of the way that we track it. It's just going to be per calendar year. But nonetheless, in 2019, we, we had, we had a pretty significant total amount of rentals. And 2020 is where you can really see that drop. So we went from 216 total rentals in 19 down to 73 last year. And again, that's in combination of city and outside organizations renting. On the flip side, you can see in 2021, just this year alone, we're already at 126. That's probably going to be a little bit to some more of the city rented facilities just because of the COVID vaccinations. But nonetheless, I mean, we're, we're not even halfway through the year yet. And we are, we are doing pretty good. So one of the other things that we were able to accomplish in 2020 was the Parks and Recreation Commission. So we were able to reinvigorate the Parks and Recreation Commission. We had some bylaw and some code changes that we were able to present to council, and y'all ultimately adopted that. We adjusted some term and, and member, or member-in-terms. We adjusted those to align a little bit, a little bit more with what we needed. We also started conducting orientations for our new board members. And so really just showing them the history of the Parks and Recreation System, how things are going to be moving forward, what their responsibilities are, and how they're going to be part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So with all of that said, we have now moved into conducting regular meetings. Those are held on the second Monday of each month at 5:00 here in the council chambers. And, and we're really excited about the, about the Parks and Recreation Commission's involvement with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Some of the goals and accomplishments that we've had in 2020, with all, with everything that I just mentioned, we were able to really accomplish a lot. There's a few things here. We had the duck pond renovation project that I know the design development was, was finished prior to my arrival. But nonetheless, we're still able to move forward with that, start on the construction documents. Texas Parks and Wildlife Department is down here. We were able to submit a grant for the duck pond in the amount of $600,000 plus to have a 50/50. And we're still waiting on, on that, on that approval from Texas Parks and Wildlife. Hopefully, we'll know by May. But nonetheless, I mean, that was a really great accomplishment. We're also able to start on the soccer fields down below on that bottom-left-hand picture, the soccer complex at Riverside Park. We completed the erosion project. I believe that was at the very beginning of 2020, prior to my arrival. Brian Willard, our golf course superintendent, was able to obtain Golf Course Superintendent of the Year award from the, his superintendents association. We had two members of our Parks and Recreation Department that were able to be, they took a test and they were certified as a Parks and Recreation professional through NRPA, which is a, is a great accomplishment. It just shows the investment that those two individuals had for Parks and Recreation. And then our pickleball courts. When I, when I arrived, we had a great group that was restriping those pickleball courts for us. And so we were able to accomplish that through teamwork with them and be able to provide some wind screens for them. And that's something that we're still continuing to do. One thing that I didn't mention on here that, that is pretty big, in my opinion, is Flow Paddle Co. That was a private-public partnership that, that we had started. And Flow Paddle is now in Riverside Park. And they're able to, you know, provide the kayaks and some of those rentals for our patrons that were, were wanted. And so I thought that was a really, I wanted to make sure that we pointed that out as well. So what's in our future? Well, we have a lot. We have, of course, our Parks Master Plan. That's, that's, that's one of the huge pieces, right? I mean, that's something that's going to be an all-inclusive plan, really touch on all 16 different parks, as well as touch, you know, really deeply on those three conceptuals for MLK Riverside and Ethel Lee. So we're really stoked about that. Still on track with bringing that, hopefully bringing that to you in October of this year for adoption. Then, of course, we have TAF that we were, we were selected and awarded the TAF bid for 2022 through 2024. So that's going to, hopefully will have a really big economic impact on the city as a whole. And so that's, that's going to be really big for us for the next three years. And we have, of course, a splash pad. We have an additional splash pad that's, that's, that's in the works and that we're looking at. So I know that's going to be in the future. We have our Texas Youth Hunting Program that we're working with Texas Parks and Wildlife on to, to come up with new programs and events. Our pop-up park that you see here is a, is a mobile park. And what we're going to be doing with that is going to various parks and having just pop-up games. So this thing has cornhole, it has washers, it has all sorts of things that we can do with, with kids. And so we'll be, we'll be taking those out to various parks and conducting pop-up parks with this trailer. And then I have a picture here of the Parks, Parks Playscape. One of the big things that, that's big for me is maintenance. That's, that's my background. My background is in parks maintenance, and that's something that we're currently working on right now with our Parks Department staff, really focusing on, on the maintenance aspect of it. You know, a fresh coat of paint can go a really long way. And so those are the things that, that we're going to be focusing on in our, in our near future. And with that, that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
The pop-up park, can it be used like for parties or, since it's mobile?
Yes, ma'am. We don't have it rented for private parties or anything like that. Right now, we're partnering with other organizations. Sun Valley Ranch, for instance, we took that out there a few weeks ago at one of their events. So that's, that's kind of what we're using that pop-up part for at the moment. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, has there been an opportunity for public comments in regards to the master plan?
No, sir, that's forthcoming. That should actually be pushed out with, this week.
Okay, awesome, sir. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank y'all.
Thanks, Jason. I'm going to take a couple of minutes and provide an update on the American Rescue Plan. I'm sure everybody has heard by now that Congress and the president last week signed this historic bill. And it'll, and I wanted to start talking to you about the impacts that that might have on us, while at the same time, setting some expectation behind that. So I want to start off by just providing a brief overview. It's a 1.9 trillion. I'll say that again, 1.9 trillion. It's hard to really grasp the magnitude of how much money that is. But this is a really cool graphic that I stole from the Wall Street Journal that kind of shows what all of that was allocated towards. And I wanted to do this intentionally to show that there's funds that are going to a variety of different agencies and purposes. There's money, of course, for the individual stimulus checks that dominate the headlines when all of this was going on. But there's money that goes towards education, to transportation, to health, small business, even agriculture. It's really, really, really broad in terms of the money that it's allocated to different entities. This is obviously going to create, on, at its face, it's going to create a lot of opportunities for us to be able to pursue grants. So for example, Michael Ada, who was here just a little while ago, communicated that the EDA, the Economic Development Administration, is going to get a significant amount of money that would allow communities to apply more than they normally can, right? And so that's just one example. There is a figure here that is 360 billion for government. That is an allocation that was specific towards states, counties, and cities. Direct allocation. Through a combination of direct allocation and grant programs that only cities, counties, or states can, can apply for. The column on the right, or on the right-hand side of this graphic, you kind of see a smaller breakdown of what that means for counties and cities. And so you'll see that 65 billion of that 360 is for counties. 45.6 billion is for cities. And I intentionally put this 19.5 billion for fewer than 50K because that's an example of how something as simple as a bill can utilize that threshold of 50,000 as what differentiates who has access to 45.6 billion versus which cities have access to only 19.5, right? So clearly, real-life example of just last week, the federal government using that threshold of 50,000 population for direct allocations. And part of that 360 was 10 billion for a coronavirus capital projects fund, which we assume will allow us and other entities to apply for, for additional funding. Now, you might be asking, well, how much will the city of Victoria get? Well, 15 million is the short answer, which is obviously a much greater amount than the amount that we were able to seek reimbursement for when the first COVID package was passed, which now seems like an eternity ago. But this is completely different. That original process was, was a process that funneled those federal dollars to the state. You may recall that TDEM was the entity that was responsible for administering those funds. It was a reimbursement-based, so we had to incur the expense, spend it by the end of December 31st, you know, submit it. And obviously, you may recall that we used it, we used a big chunk of it for our hazard pay for our first responders and a few other things that we needed to take care of, like these plastic shields and other things to, to just get us ready for getting back to normal, so to speak. This is completely different. From what we gather, these funds will come in two separate allocations. The first one being 50% of that, no later than 60 days from March 11th. And then the, the remainder would come no earlier than one year after the first payment. From what we gather, there isn't any necessarily specific process that we would need to follow at the beginning of the process. There are some reporting requirements that would have to come afterwards. But there isn't anything at the beginning of the process, unlike the first one that we went through last year. And this time, the deadline or the timetable for the usage of the funds is much further out. And so this bill has that being December 31st, 2024. And so it really gives communities some time to really think strategically about how you want to invest those dollars. I will say that the county is also slated to get an allocation. Not as significant as ours, but they're slated to get an allocation. To be determined if our health department will receive a direct allocation. I didn't get a chance to talk with David directly. But we, but I, but I gather from reading some of the summaries that have been coming out this week that there will be direct allocations for public health agencies. I'm just not sure if, if ours will be one of those. But in any case, for us, it's 15 million. Now, the next logical question that I'm sure you and everybody's wondering is, well, how can you utilize those funds? And so some of this is consistent with the first allocation that came last year, and some of it isn't. Some of it is based off of lessons learned, for example, from that first bill. So for example, that first bill did not allow you to use those funds for loss of revenue. This one will. And so this will, will allow us the opportunity to go back, see, you know, for example, sales tax, how much sales tax was lowered, catch the difference, and make us whole, so to speak. And so revenue loss. Cover increased expenditures related to the pandemic. This is pretty straightforward. There's some questions regarding what exactly that means. But similar to the last time, it's probably going to be one of those things where it's what we think is important for our organization and for our community. Mitigate economic harm in community. The first, or not, the previous two bills that were passed, we're very focused on small businesses, private small businesses, grants, loan programs, you know, et cetera. You may recall Jeff from the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if he made it in this setting, but he made a comment at, a public setting at some point, with him not being happy because the Chamber of Commerce was not eligible, you know, for some of that grant fund, because they're not a private business. And so this bill attempts to make that much broader. And so nonprofits are eligible, even specific industries in the tourism industry, whether that's hotels, or whether that's, you know, museums or things of that sort. And so this would create an opportunity for us to establish grant programs to a much broader degree than the first bill would have allowed us to do. Now, as a reminder, we didn't set up a grant program. We partnered with People Fund to set up a loan program. Premium pay for essential workers, fairly consistent with, you know, what was the case the first time. From what we gather, though, the, the intent behind the inclusion of this bill is to focus, of course, on essential workers that are involved with vaccination clinics. There's a clear intent that, you know, now we're at a stage in this pandemic where the focus is the application of vaccines. Mayor Protem, you may recall from our call with policy that, you know, there's a lot of conversation just about fatigue and burnout and things of that sort. And so I think there is an attempt to try and offer some financial assistance to the folks that have sacrificed so much to keep these vaccination hubs all over the country moving forward. Lastly, there was an inclusion that allows some of these funds to be spent for water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, which may or may not be associated with COVID. And so that obviously, especially in our situation, with what we just went through a few weeks ago, this presents an opportunity to explore utilizing some of these funds to further make our water system more resilient. Now, what does that mean? It's to be determined. It will take some time for us to really try and gather what the needs are of the community. And this is where I want to try and manage expectations that, that, and ask for patience through this process. Because we will need time to meet with our service agencies, for example, or nonprofits, to really identify what the need is. We'll need to meet with the business community to try and figure out what the needs are. We'll obviously, with conversation with council, also get a feel for what our infrastructure needs are. You may recall that we're currently are going through an RFP associated with, with broadband. And so to be determined on what that looks like at the conclusion of that. But it would make sense for us to allow that process to finish, to then make a decision if we think it's appropriate to allocate any of these funds towards the implementation of that program. And so some of these things will take time. We're obviously going through some master plans. I mean, there's a lot of these elements that'll, that'll take some time. I'm sure that some other communities will probably start administering programs in a quick fashion. But it's important to remind everyone that here, we have not been doing that. And, and we're not structured to all of a sudden be able to administer millions and millions of dollars of grant funds. As a comparison, we receive close to $600,000 of CDBG funds a year. And you know how robust that process is to administer $600,000 a year and how much staff time that takes to do that. And so imagine what we will have to do organizationally to adjust to be able to administer grant programs that might be in the millions of dollars. And so all of that will take some time to figure out. And so I simply wanted to inform you of the 15 million dollar figure, if you hadn't heard it already, talk to you a little bit about what the money can be used for, and ask for a little bit of patience as we work through the process to determine how to best allocate these resources. Obviously, US Council will be involved in that conversation as well. And so happy to entertain that during our one-on-one meetings. Or otherwise, we'll plan to have a conversation at council meetings, too, about your priorities as more information comes out about how to spend these funds. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
For item five, is drainage included in any of that?
I did not read the word drainage in that, no. It was very specific water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure.
What, what?
I was hoping.
What goes into the drains?
I'm sorry?
What goes into the drains? What do we hope is the only thing?
Well, if you're on Main Street, it's a bunch of dirt from Texas concrete.
Water.
But typically, yes, water.
Thank you for good news.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we've been discussing it really since we found out as an EOT. And it's going to be a challenging process. 15 million dollars sounds like a lot, but quite frankly, it'll go very quick. You know, especially if we start allocating millions of dollars to broad- especially if we start allocating millions of dollars to broadband or other infrastructure projects. But it does present an opportunity for us to do something that we probably have never been able to do, which is establish a grant program that our service agencies can apply for and truly make more of a transformational impact for them. You know, typically our service agencies are obviously capped at what they can ask for because of our CDBG funding allocations. And you know who they are, so I'm not going to, you know, repeat who the entities are. But this will present an opportunity for us to potentially have funds so that they can apply to a process that we just haven't had that opportunity to do before. And so that part is exciting, even though it might come with a lot of headaches and it'll be worth it.
Not every day we get 15.7 million, .07 million.
That's right. Yep.
Not every day we spend 1.9 trillion.
Thank goodness for that.
All right. Well, that concludes this presentation and that'll also conclude the city manager's reports for this evening.
I guess having more business, I'll just call the meeting. Okay. At this time, we will adjourn into executive session.
The city council will recess into executive session on March 16th at 6:33 PM. The subject matter of the deliberation is as follows. An executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation or other matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar Association clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. And an executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.087 to discuss or deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the city council seeks to have, locate, stay or expand in or near the territory of the city of Victoria and with which the city of Victoria is conducting economic development
Okay.
All right.
So we'll take a recess, a five minute recess?